Okay. I've restarted recording locally to my computer.
Okay, sure.
But when I stopped recording, it stopped your recording as well. So you're going to have to restart yours. If you want to start and it will give you the option of going to cloud. Or to your local computer. It will be on the bottom of the screen.
Okay, I need to know who entered just barely and that says user. Who is that? Can you tell me your name, please?
No, I'm not going to tell you who I am.
No, I got you, but there's one other person who came on. Who else is on the line here? I've got somebody that just says user. Who is this? And you can you unmute yourself and just tell me your name, please, so I can be name you.
You might try a chat message to the person, Casey.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Sean.
Hi. Casey, you're already shared.
She's really transparent tonight.
She had to take her dog out right before the meeting. Okay, it's I got it. I got who that person is. Okay, let me just submit Lucian. And rename this person. Okay.
Is HCTV's a co-host now, Casey?
Yes, and he's. Yep.
Excellent.
Rachel, okay. It's Rachel Kane.
Hi, Lucian. All right.
It's a full-time job getting all these people on.
Yep.
Like pop up sometimes waiting. Okay, so Tom's online.
Casey, the when I had to do this the first time was when we had the community event for the police department with Greensboro and there were like 28 people. And like five minutes in, I realized, oh, I gotta keep track of the waiting room. And I had not realized that at the time. So I can I understand what you're feeling right now.
Oh, there's Kaylee. Okay, got her coming in.
Hi, Kaylee. So we've got Lucian, Wiz, Kaylee, and we've got the ghost of Sherry Cornish.
Yep, she's just taken out her puppy dog first. She'll be back in a minute.
Casey, just a reminder to start recording too, just as a backup.
Okay.
I share a screen on the bottom of the screen.
I'll just record on my computer then. That's what I'll do. And then we can save it to our server or something. That's what I'll do. Okay.
Sherry's back.
Sorry, she just ate you everything. Stay out there for a minute.
All right, so. Looks like the gang's all here. My computer says 6:01. So I'm gonna call the regular select board meeting. Order. Assuming I can find the agenda. There we go. And so first thing is adjust the agenda. Does anybody have any? Select board members have anything they want to add or change or any of that?
I do possibly have a change. I'm just not sure if we need to do it as an additional item, but. We're doing the loan application for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and at the same time possibly or adding an item to authorize Sean to enter into the engineering agreement once it's approved by the state. So I don't know how you wanna.
Let's do that as part of the same project, right?
Yeah, it is.
So let's do that.
Okay.
Yeah, as part of that. Yeah, I get some feedback from somewhere. Tom, can you be on mute maybe? Thank you. Nice. All right, so let's do that as what is that one? That is item number five, right? There. Anybody have anything else? Maybe we'll make make it through closer to the scheduled time tonight. Due to select next thing is select board to approve minutes from last time, which was November the 19th. Does anybody can somebody make a motion that we accept those minutes and and we can discuss changes?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on those minutes? Already submitted my. Quest. All right. So all in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. And Wiz was an aye. So I got everybody. That was Sherry, Wiz, Kaylee, Lucian, and me. Excellent. Next up is communication from the audience. Do we have anybody on our virtual audience who would like to address the select board about something that's not coming up later on our agenda? Hearing none. We're gonna roll forward into the town manager report. So Sean Fielder, please tell us what you guys have been up to in the town manager's office.
Sorry.
Oh.
I thought. Can we just back up a moment?
Yeah, yeah, you have a yes. From the audience.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought I thought somebody else was gonna say something. We just wondered. Because of the weather this weekend for the balloon test, do you know when the town will know if they're doing it on Saturday or Sunday?
My my understanding is that. The contractor, I thought it was maybe left to the contractor who's doing it, but I'm not totally sure about that.
So so we might not know really until. Just look for tire tracks going up there or something.
I was gonna look for a balloon.
All right, so so they'll just do it or they won't do it, I guess. And there there's no plan for them to communicate with. Town or us now.
Not that I'm aware of, Sean.
Yeah, just after what I understand on this is they were gonna be posting updates on down Rackland and Merton's website. So I checked this afternoon. They hadn't changed anything. It's a little bit hard to find, but I was able to find the news update on the DRM website. So during the meeting tonight, I will actually look for that to see if there's been an adjustment. We did. I did communicate with Janil Smith from Centerline this afternoon and copied the DRM attorney. Basically, she emailed to us, you know, we're trying to move forward. And I said, okay, we'll just keep an eye on things. Obviously, we all know the weather is not gonna be great, I don't believe, coming into this weekend.
Done. Sean, if you do get an update from somebody tomorrow in time to post on the town website, could you maybe post there?
Absolutely.
I think that would be good.
Yep.
All right. Yeah, I'll check as we're talking.
Very much.
Yeah, thanks, Rachel.
Yep, that was it. Thank you. Figure out these buttons.
All right, back to the town managers' report.
Okay, so this it ties right in with the first item I was gonna note. So we heard a little bit about the balloon test in case. Sorry, good evening, everybody. If folks are not aware, AT&amp;T did agree to do the second balloon test for the proposed cell tower. On a portion of or in the vicinity of the Buffalo Mountain area. And what's shown now on the website is Saturday, the 5th and or Sunday, the 6th. I don't know. This snowstorm could be an issue. So I'll update and I'll do a search as we're looking going through things tonight. If there's a change, we'll try to do our best to get the notice out via the town's website. As well as Front Porch Forum. We did post some information about this on Front Porch Forum. So coming off the last meeting, I did communicate with DRM and the public should be aware that the process to extend the public comment period is in the pipeline pushing out to January 13th. So that's one item to be aware of. On the town's website right now, I think it's the second news item. If anybody needs to see links to get to the case number where the public utility, the new singular LLC, which slashes AT&amp;T, also known as AT&amp;T. The information is up on the town's website. So you can quickly access the link back to the Public Utility Commission information if you have anything you want to review at that location. I'm working change subjects. I'm working on scheduling with NVDA. Please remember that we had a we did have a citizen petition a little while back to just see what could be done about the intersection of Glen Side and Mill Street. So I'm in the process of lining up the consultant. I've exchanged a little bit of information with the expert from Northeast Vermont Development Association, trying to get him to just do an assessment on this intersection. Make sure we're doing what we need to do in regards to signage and other items. The information at hand is that we wouldn't jump right doing jump right to installing a traffic signal. It's very low probability of something like that happening. But we are gonna be going through the motions of just making sure we're doing what we need to in regards to the manual for uniform traffic control. Design parameters. So we're working on that. I don't know if Tom was gonna comment on this, but I will. Highway Crew did set up no parking here to corner sign on the parking spot. It's the one that is directly adjacent to the pull-in to the post office. So we have installed the sign there. Unfortunately, I saw somebody parking in the spot this evening, but at least we've got the sign up and, you know, moving toward reminding folks, hey, please stay out of that one site. So it gives folks coming out of the post office a little bit better sight line. Also, the crew did.
Of course, I've watched people parking there for the last three days, even after the sign was up.
Yeah, so I know there's a number of people on the call. I'm not sure if Chief Cochrane is on, but if hopefully you heard that last comment, but we'll I'll check in with the chief on that, Wiz. So thanks for pointing that out. Also, for Highway Crew work, they did some ditch work and road edge material cleanup in the vicinity of the East Hardwick Main Street Bridge. So. What that did on this last rainstorm this earlier this week and actually did a really nice job with the improvements they've made of keeping some material from ending up on that bridge deck and in the approaches to either side. So thanks to the crew for doing that change. I think it was a really good adjustment. But I had a ask from the. Planning Commission slash pedestrian traffic safety task force recently about, you know, what is the pricing for one of the solar panels, radar speed feedback readback devices? And this is something that my observation is going into 2021's. Next cycle of discussions on those improvements, the task force had put before the select board, we can be considering this. The price on this particular unit, it's a 60 watt solar panel unit. The price is $2,675 plus a little bit of shipping cost. So I just wanna make sure the board is aware of that. Tom received a quote, so we've got that to be looking at when we want to make some determinations if we want to start going with some of these speed readback devices. So we do have that information in hand. I have reached out to a local survey firm to get them involved with the Riverview Street. Sorry, River Street Review. I haven't had any direct conversations as of yet, but we'll keep that rolling so we can get their input and assessment and, you know, have their feedback on what are some, you know, steps we should be considering and just trying to get more figured out, if you will, on the River Street issue. So that's in the pipeline. We did move forward on hiring our new part-time community development coordinator. I'm pleased to announce Jeff Sawicki, who's a Peacham resident, started with us this week. It'll be first time in my professional career I've started somebody completely virtually and from a remote location, but I it's workable and we're gonna make a good go of it. And Jeff brings a really good skill set to the table. So. His he'll he'll be working primarily on securing other grant support opportunities for various town initiatives. He brings a really good skill set to the table. He is a small business owner. He has a business in St. John's Berry. So he's gonna be a good asset for our team. We have his email set up. We'll get this up on the website. I realized I didn't do this as of yet, but we'll get it up on the website. And he does have a voicemail extension established as of now. Once we go back to so-called normal operations for municipal offices, he'll have some time dedicated and working out of what was formerly the Community Justice Center on the second floor. So we've got some space dedicated for him moving forward. Work behind the scenes a little bit and thanks to Tom, who also is involved with this right now. We are collaborating or collaborated with, I should say, Northern County's Healthcare. They are working very closely with the state of Vermont and we're moving forward. They are moving forward, I should say, on having a COVID-19 testing facility at the Hardwick Fire Department. So this information is now up on our website. I did put it up on the Front Porch Forum tonight as well. This is gonna this is part of the state's initiative to have testing COVID testing available coronavirus testing available within any drive location in the state of Vermont in 30 minutes or less. So. Just a couple snippets from the announcement that's out. It's no cost anyone. They do have it's a self-administered nasal swab. Turnaround time's about two to three business days. What they're doing is Saturday, as of now, it would be testing on Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday, 9 to noon. And then on Tuesdays from 3:30 to 6:30, they they plan to kick off the first round of testing opportunity here this weekend. It's a drive-through type process. So. We're trying to do our part as a community just to help citizens of Hardwick, but others, you know, in case they need to get a test, you know, with the goal of trying to keep everybody, keep exposures down and keep everybody healthy. So again, we're just trying to do our part here. Two final points. We're we're continuing to operate under no and limited public access approaches and obviously doing remote meetings tonight being an example. Field operations are continuing and for our customers, those needing service from us, you know, if it's office-type service, just please plan to use your phone or email and we're being as responsive as we can be, you know, given this unprecedented work environment. So, you know, our team's keeping up. And doing our best to, you know, provide this service for everybody. Final thing for this evening would be just reminding everybody, keep practicing social distancing measures, which would include the use of masks. It does make a difference. Where. You know, we're just we're gonna have a tough couple of months ahead of us is my observation and just one foot in front of the other and we'll keep trying to do our best. So that's what I have for everybody this evening. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
You covered a lot of ground.
It's been it's it's a little busy right now for good for good. You know, there's a lot happening, but it's good things. You know, we're continuing to get a lot done for the good of the community. So.
Right.
The staff here, the staff works really hard. So I commend all our team members. They really are getting the job done. So, you know, they need to be commended on, you know, what we're dealing with right now.
Yeah. And on that note, I'll segue to to Tom Fadden. And Tom, do you want to maybe Sean stole all your thunder, but if not, do you want to tell us what the road crew's been up to?
Oh, that's all right. This is just a few other things. We did manage to get out the last couple of days there before we got this little bit of snow and cold to go around. And we did manage to cover quite a quite a few of our roads there to redo some of the follows that were coming up. So we've been doing that. The guys have also been hauling back some more material to the shop so we can get ready for spring or. If we have another break here in the winter here where things get really potholy, we'll have some material to go around, cover cover the stuff up. We do still have one truck down, so hopefully this storm is going more east than what they thought now. So right now, they're only calling maybe two to five for this weekend, so which is good. We got any more than that than being down the truck that's gonna slow us process down a little bit. Besides that, and guys have been taking quite a quite a few days off here and there. We've been, you know, having having a lull because, you know, well, we've gotten everything done, I guess, and ahead there for the summer. So we've been doing that. But when the guys are around and stuff, they've been going out in as a crew of two and cutting some brush here and there on some of the back roads. They cut some of the good apple trees. They're up to on Center Road there to whip those back a little bit. A little bit of water here and there. We did spend a day down to the sewer plant with Kenny, help help him replace some of my aerator lines. But besides that, I've been getting prices on a new truck there to replace the one that we want to. Replace next year that we up in the capital replacement. That's the truck that's also broke down right now. As of right now, I mean, if we were to purchase the truck for the whole over year for 2020, we'd probably save somewhere around $11,000 to $12,000 less than what we would if we were to purchase a new 2021 model. So I've been working on that. But besides that, everything else is going good, so.
And. Our lead time, just to remind everybody, the lead times on the trucks are really long, right? I mean, by the time you get it and have a body put on it, it's.
Well, yeah, for example, we got Pearlie's truck last year. We purchased that truck or put an order in on his truck in December and we just got that truck. What? Last week, I believe. Somewhere is that towards the end of November, I think, somewhere around there.
It was the 20th.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thanks, Case. So we're almost a year out. So.
Yeah.
By the time we get the truck. Yeah, I mean, with this, I mean, this is a stock truck that that they have already and they're looking to get rid of it because it's a 2020 model and the new 2021s are coming in. And that's where we'd be saving, you know, $11,000 for purchasing a 2020, which I don't think we need a 2021 model, just to spend the extra $11,000 on. But anyway, so.
Oh, good. Keep at it. Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom when we have him? Hearing none. Thank you, Tom, and. Move on to Police Department Report. Is Aaron Cochrane on the I don't see him here, but.
He is not.
Okay.
I will reach out to him. I don't know.
Eric, one more thing.
Yeah.
Just to remind everybody, there is a no parking ban right now that started November 15th. I know we've got a couple of cars that have been parking constantly on Church Church Street. There's like three vehicles right there. And there's a couple that's been down in the village parking lot. There is a parking ban that started November 15th and that runs till April 15th from from, I believe it's midnight till 6:00 AM in the morning. So I am gonna be stapling some signs up there tomorrow around that apartment building just to pre-warn them. So.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Tom, that's that's the information that would be listed in our winter operations notice that I called you about today, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Sean. Yep.
So what I'll do also is we can get the winter operations notice up on the website as well for everybody.
Okay. Yeah, and so the point with that is to get people to not park on the street so that you guys can plow.
Right, I mean, you know, I mean, everybody watches the weather, I'm assuming, you know, they could move their vehicles, you know, when it's gonna snow. Times when it's not gonna snow, I personally don't have a problem, but it's a lot easier if the vehicles are gone for us, you know, cleaning everything up. So we don't want to toe anybody away, but.
But but you will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
At their expense, so.
Yep. Yes. All right. Thanks, Tom. That was a good reminder.
Thanks.
The Police Department, I know we got a incident report in the shared drive. To look through. And. I'm not sure. I don't have anything else. So if Aaron's not with us, should I can I just move on, Sean, or do you want to provide anything?
No, I think I know he was gonna talk about the incidents. I don't have anything else. I assume he's on a call. I'm having Casey text. I don't have the capability to text him from my home location. So my apologies, I can't track him down.
Well, I don't think we need to. He knows we're meeting and if he had something that was urgent, he would be here. And if he if there's nothing urgent, then Sherry.
Sean, do you have a little update at least on their with the COVID cases and all that stuff? Are they still quarantining or is there anything new there?
No, we it would be the same as the last actually. Well, let me just say where we're at right now. And I think I maybe we were just about to initiate last time out. The. The the staff person that did have to isolate was cleared to come back to work. And then the other two parties went through their quarantine period, so they were also cleared to go back to work. We did have one other individual in another department that had received the call from Department of Health and they were considered a close contact. So they also did have to quarantine. This was another parallel process that was going on. So as of right now, we don't have any stuff. That are either quarantined and or isolated and the the the. Party and the family that did contract have are in their recovery state and doing well, fortunately.
Right.
Yeah, I just. I would like to add this. You know, the the information at hand is that, you know, we do have, you know, we've got some, we've got some incidents, you know, pretty significant incidents from COVID-19 in our community as we speak. So. This definitely is gonna be impacting people all of us know and interact with. So. I this is not a scare tactic comment, but you know, what I've been relaying to folks is I think you really need to just assume everybody is. You know, just protect yourself is how I might say this, you know, anybody you're interacting with, you know, right now, just given what we see with the incidents numbers coming up. It's it's serious right now. You know, we're not gonna stick our heads in the sand, but we, you know, we gotta do the right thing to get control on the the numbers is what we gotta try to do right now. So that's it.
Thanks. So moving along next is item one, select board to discuss pedestrian bridge improvement strategy. And I know. So everybody knows that the pedestrian bridge was closed earlier this year because. A broken cable was spotted. Sean got a quickly got an engineer to just do a quick assessment and that assessment. Came back that we shouldn't have the bridge open, that it was unsafe. And we've since had a more in-depth assessment that offered some possible strategies. Moving forward, one would be to repair what's what's there on the 100-year-old bridge that has a fair amount of decay. And another approach is to replace it entirely. And I don't know. What more information we have tonight? Do we have more, Sean, than that?
No, just we had had reported last time out on the. Second report that we've got, there was some basic numbers attached to if you did a replacement strategy. The the range of pricing shown there was $40,000 to $60,000. It wasn't recommended as the preferred strategy. It might buy us a year or two. But it would allow it to be used, of course. And then. A replacement bridge was noted in this most recent report in the order of magnitude 200,000 to 300,000, plus any rework of the abutments. So those are some of the numbers that were thrown at us.
And is this something that Jeff is gonna be looking into if we are asking for? Either repair or historic replacement?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So maybe what I yeah, maybe what I could offer Eric is that what I'm thinking about right now is. You know, I just need to see, you know, what what comes out of the discussion this evening. And Jeff and I had already talked about during his orientation meeting that this will be a project. He'll be one of the projects he would be involved with as far as just trying to seek out, you know, what those funding opportunities might be. And I've already done a little bit of research on this. I think a couple areas where we have some opportunities are USDA Community Facilities Grant, USDA Rural Business Enterprise Grant, and then also Preservation Trust of Vermont. So we know there's a couple of opportunities where we could go after this. You know, bear in mind, we have competing interest in town for other projects. So that's, you know, that's that's not news. Uh, you know, bear in mind, we have uh, competing interest in town for other projects, so that's, you know, that's, that's not news. We got some other things that we're trying to figure out, some improvements on. And then, of course, uh, when we seek out these grant opportunities, you know, we always have the match, the local match that we need to put on the table. And that match is variable depending on, you know, the grant, assuming you receive the grant and what they offer, if you will.
Kaylee?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Sean if that, um, so we're, I know that there, at a previous Select Board meeting, there was talk of the Preservation Trust. And the bridge, um, do you envision that that, that timeline would be longer? If we're looking at grants, like are we, are we looking at trying to figure this out for um, next summer? Or if we're looking for funding from other sources, are we, do you have any sense of what kind of timeline we might be thinking about?
I think I would stick with what Wiz noted uh, in a previous Select Board meeting, and that was back in, if I'm not mistaken, October. And Wiz pointed out, you know, folks probably ought to anticipate a year. Um, I, I wouldn't see us in a position to do a replacement. A full replacement is definitely into next year, right? Um, a temporary, uh, I think is a different discussion. Um, I, you know, I wouldn't see anything necessarily getting done through these winter months, but you never know.
Sure.
It's not a night.
Um, I just uh, wanna volunteer to uh, help with it in, in whatever way we can. Um, I can. I don't know if it's time now to talk about a little bit of a task force so that we don't pile it on to. Our new uh, person. Right out the, you know, I mean, a little bit of assistance. It seems like it's, we would need to work out a timeline. And in, and have like a budget that we would figure out whether we do have design work done. Price out what that is, make those decisions. Um, isn't that the next step? After we have a better idea of what it's gonna cost to either repair or replace? Wouldn't we, I, I don't know. That's how we approach things at the Townhouse. So, you know, it's two to three hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, we're gonna go for some grants and it's gonna take possibly two, two years to get it done. But it all depends on how those grant deadlines come in and what their match is and all of that stuff. I think that um, some concerted effort and we could be successful. And I'm volunteering to help with it.
Yay.
I'll help.
Lucian?
One thing I wanted to just say, I got into a little bit at the last meeting, but the, um, I just wanted to see some numbers on what it would take to take it out. Cause I think that should be in the mix, um, just as, as a discussion point. Is that something you could do, Sean, is to get, get, talk to somebody in the note about that?
Yeah, if that's the board's preference, I could check into that.
I would say that we'd need to have a vote on that because I can't imagine removing a, a major part of our infrastructure downtown.
Well, I'm not talking about taking it out. I'm talking about getting a number to take it out so that it's in the mix right now.
Probably all metals, I bet, I bet they would be able to put a number on that. Others might too, but. Yeah, so another thing that I think of, Sherry, when, when you were talking about timelines is. And I don't know, maybe this is a, uh, touching the third rail as well, but um, if it. Uh, one of the things that was mentioned in the report is it would be possible to replace that bridge with a prefab bridge. Which comes on a truck and is set in place with a crane.
Well, I don't imagine that we'll get any historic um, uh, support on that.
No, I wouldn't imagine that we would, but um, it, it's still possible that it could be cheaper. And it could, and it could be a nice bridge. I mean, there are some nice prefab bridges out there. I don't know. I'm just throwing, again, maybe, maybe, maybe touching the third rail. To like, talk about changes to the swinging bridge, but um, as Wiz showed us through uh, some photo documentary history. There were many iterations of that bridge before the current one. So.
Eric can offer this, and it's not, just real quick, one of the things we heard today at a Yellow, the Yellow Barn Planning Meeting, and this isn't to uh. Offer up what the bridge should be moving forward, but I know we heard from uh, somebody who's involved with a pretty significant commercial project. Right now that steel prices, actually, people doing steelwork, the pricing has gone down. It doesn't sound right with everything we've been hearing about the economy. But steel prices and steelwork, people are scrambling for that right now, so just for what it's worth.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe the timing is good, who knows, and maybe we gotta.
I just, I just want to point out that although there were many, 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 many bridges on that site before. This is the one that worked.
Yep.
And it's over a hundred years old. And it gets a lot of use, and it's a big part of our economic development. It's a, a part of downtown.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that it's part of downtown. I think it's um. You know, it's, it's uh, kind of iconic for our downtown. It also, you know, we have uh, parking challenges. And it, it makes an easy connection to the Daniels Building Lot, which is important. We also have um, you know, school uh, offices over there that people walk. To the elementary school and um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's integral to our downtown. I'd love to see something there. I personally have never found that bridge that's existing to be beautiful, but it looks rough.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
Also relatively unmaintained for many years. I mean, we just used it, we used it up.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I'm sure the town got his money's worth out of it.
Absolutely.
Three hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, I'm for putting that in, for sure.
Lucian's in for the three fifty.
Hey.
Kaylee?
So I guess my, uh, just a question. I think a task force is an awesome idea. It's, sounds like there's an opportunity to definitely get more information and more. Of a timeline. Um, I guess my question is, and maybe we can, we can answer this in our budget conversation tonight. But do we, do we need to be thinking about this for next year in our budget? And if we're not, then are we um, then are we just going to address it as we find more information?
So I, I think you're absolutely right that if we're gonna do something about it, we're gonna need to pay for it in the budget. So. We, uh, task force, so I've heard task force thrown out. We've had some volunteers. We do have an actual staff person now. We can work on looking for grant funding and stuff. I'm also, I mean, I, I hesitate to, to get us. Too bogged down in process, but um, it is something that's, I think, probably pretty important to a lot of people in town. And visually and um, and also in a utilitarian sense, I wonder if it's something that we wanna. You know, do we, do we wanna try to do something formal to get more community input on what people would like to see there? Cause it's gonna be a new bridge, right? Like if, so we could either re- repair the bridges there. Which costs fifty to sixty grand and buys us like five or ten years, which doesn't seem like a good use of funds to me. Or as Lucian is seeming to um, propose, we could try to do without it. But it seems to me like the most likely course forward is gonna be a new bridge. And even if we're looking at something historic, it's still not gonna only be historic in the sense that it has some. Visual cues that remind you of the old bridge, right? It won't be the current bridge.
Right.
So, given that there's a likelihood that it will be a brand-new bridge. Do we want to solicit more community input in a, some, through some sort of. Um, outreach that, you know, where we try to gauge people's impression on, you know, would you like to have? No bridge, or maybe, I don't know if the no bridge thing is, is in there, but we could put that in there. And um, or like another um, suspension bridge or a um, prefab bridge within our. Or do we wanna, are we good? We think, do we think we know that, what people expect?
There's a variable on your last one, Eric, and that is, it's a prefab that is made to look like what is existing now. So it's, it's, you know, you run the deck in and then they put up the cables and the hangers. They are structural, but it makes it look like.
Oh, really?
You know, it's maintaining that historical character.
Really? I didn't know that was a possibility.
Yeah.
Kaylee, did you move your hand, or are you just moving your hand?
No, that was, I was just looking at that, um, at the reinforcing of the existing structure with the steel beams. Sorry, I moved my hand.
Oh.
I think it's important for the conversation now that everybody is aware, when we met with um, Lisa from Preservation Trust. Uh, she assisted with getting uh, Engineering Ventures involved with the, this most current inspection, the, the more detailed inspection. She was already getting, she'd already um, put this in terms of, you know, we, we can assist you with uh, seeking out variable. Partner in funding support and, you know, assist in this process, so. You know, if that's the word's prerogative, we've got a good resource there. And I, I would see our uh, new Community Development Coordinator, you know, involved on this. Just one other thing, um, you know, we obviously have other uh, infrastructure needs uh, and that are potentially going after these same pots of money. So Memorial Slate Repair and Suffolk is probably about a thirty thousand dollar job. We don't have that money available right now. We're about, you know, zero dollar balance on the capital improvement line item for the Memorial Building. You know, we've got other needs, and that's, that's not news. We've already talked about this, so that's it.
Yeah, we need a new highway garage.
Oh, it just seems like if there's um, willingness and interest from any individuals in the community, we could put it out there. We're, we could say that we're forming a task force and invite people to um, show interest. And we could uh, ask the Planning Commission if they're interested in helping in any way. Or if they have members of the Planning Commission that would be interested in being involved in it. Of course, it seems like Jeff would be a part of it um, in the discussions and Kristen and. I, you know, I mean, I don't think it's that, that hard to figure out that, of course, we're not gonna figure it out here in our Select Board meetings. In our regular meetings. It's not gonna happen. So it seems like a separate group needs to focus on it a little bit. And then maybe that, that group can come back to the Select Board and make recommendations with ideas about how much it would cost for design fees. And how much it would cost to replace it, or get a prefab one, or what those options are. We don't have all that information yet. So, uh, you know.
All right, so.
Sounds like a great idea.
Huh?
I think that sounds like a great idea. Go for it.
Yeah, so.
Task force of the Select Board generally includes two members of the Select Board, but it's okay. I can, I will run with this because.
Wiz, Wiz volunteered too.
Wiz is interested as well.
Yeah, that's two. Anybody else?
And then Jeff would be one of our people that is at least involved with us on a, at least on a, you know. Ancillary level so that he can help with other resources. I mean, that, he, he knows a lot about this sort of thing.
Yeah, that'd be a great way to have him interact with you, Sherry and Wiz. And also get a feel for the community a little bit, and it's a pressing project. We should do something. The thing we should not do is leave it the way it is forever.
Thank you.
So, all right, so you guys are gonna take that and you're gonna report back um, in January.
Okay.
Is that good?
Sure.
All right. Doesn't mean you have to be finished, just, you're just gonna report.
Yeah.
What you know.
Does anybody have the, um, I know we have a meeting on the seventh. What's the next one?
The next Select Board meeting, you mean in January?
It'd be the twenty-first.
Yeah, it'd be a lot like seven plus fourteen, probably.
Yeah, but I think we made it the seventh. It, it's usually the first and third, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so it'd be twenty-one. Report back on the twenty-one meeting?
And eighteenth of February. And then we make a new plan.
Say it again, Sherry.
It's the seventh and the twenty-first of January.
Yep.
And the fourth and eighteenth of February.
The report would be due back January twenty-one.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, Sherry and Wiz, for taking that and moving it along, because you're right, we're not gonna decide here.
Gonna make it happen here.
Nope. Um, all right, moving along. Next item is Select Board to Discuss Proposal from East Hardwick Resident to Purchase Town Property. This is um. This reminds me of a similar thing we had a year or two ago with some property over in the. East End, uh, or sorry, West End. Um, so this is a case where someone in East Hardwick. Noticed that the town owns an adjoining parcel, um, and they have offered to buy it from the town. Um, it's a small parcel that apparently the town acquired a tax sale. Um, and I think the purpose of this discussion is, is basically to figure out. The board's willingness to um, move forward in this. I don't think we need to make. Any like, decisions about pricing or how the contract, how it would all work. It's just, you know, conception, um, are we in, interested in pursuing this as a concept, selling this parcel? Does everybody know which parcel we're talking about here? You get the info, yeah?
Yeah, is, is there any, I can't think of a reason why we'd wanna, why it'd be useful for the town? Can, can anybody?
That, I think it would be useful for the town if someone else owned it, because if someone else owned it, they would pay tax on it. We.
Not much taxes, though.
Not much, but.
Every little bit helps.
Right. Kaylee?
I was just wondering if Tom had any thoughts on, um, there's, um. Obviously, there's the right of way from the main road, which is right there, and there is, it's kind of the only access to the bottom of that bridge in East Hardwick. Um, and typically, to get down there, you kind of like, go along the gravel. It's not great. But I'm just curious, is, is there anything that we should consider from a road standpoint about that parcel or a plowing standpoint? Um, there might be none. I'm just curious. I think there's also a hydrant, a fire hydrant there, or there used to be.
Tom, are you still listening?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to figure out what parcel you guys are talking about. Are you talking about the one there that goes down? Oh, if you're coming down off the hill in East Hardwick, just where you get the bridge, go to the right and go down in there, or?
Yep.
Yeah, there's no hydrant down in there, uh, but uh, we have used that before for water source, uh, if we need to pump out from, from the river.
And. Would something like that be built into a contract if we were to sell it? Could it be part of the sales agreement that the town has access for those purposes?
Sure.
I, I, I would say that would be good, Liz. I mean, you know, put in there the, you know, our department has the right to obtain, you know, right of way down through there. For purpose of, you know, water use or whatever for fires and stuff.
Is that the only, uh, is that the only use that you guys make of that?
Yeah, because we, yeah, yeah, because we've never plowed that or anything like that, Eric, so.
Okay.
I, I, I'm afraid to bring it up, but it's also River Street.
No, it is. I thought it was the other side of the road.
It's extension of, but it's, it's an extension of. So it's being used now to access the backside of the post office.
Oh, Sean, it's on the other side.
It's on the other side of Main Street from River Street.
It's on the, if the um, the Putman's building is on the left of the bridge, this property's on the right.
No, I know, but uh, looking at just old reference information, both, both directions are called River Street. That's what I need to say. Yeah, in the old, just looking at some older information.
Oh.
But it's private, as far as we know, on that side as well.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds like it's private to the town right now. No? Just saying. Let's, um, yeah, I don't know if we can make a decision about this tonight.
Well, what we, what we want to decide, well, ideally what we would decide tonight is just the level of. Either we have no interest in pursuing this and tell these folks, no, thank you, or. Yeah, let's, let's have a look. Let's try to establish a value for the property. Let's try to, you know. Work in, you know, see if the, the folks who've asked to buy it would be amenable to a right of way to the river. And see where we get. Are we interested in doing that or are we going to say no?
East Hardwick Neighborhood Association in a conversation before we made a decision about that. I mean, it's a village center now, so. Do they get to, is there anything there that at least allow some other people to know about it?
So there's, I mean, it's also a fair district, which is a municipal organization.
Right.
Sure, I mean, if you want to.
Private, it's a private real estate transaction.
Right. Yeah, so we wouldn't have to do anything. It's just a, I think Sherry's just saying we want to. Broaden the discussion within the East Hardwick group. But ultimately, ultimately. It's, you know, there's a whole process for the, the town selling land and it. Begin with us deciding that we wanted to move forward.
So there's no, so, so people in general aren't using that for access for anything? There's no like nice swimming hole down there or anything like that? If anybody knows, there's no, no public use of it currently.
It is, it is accessed for some fishing. Um, it's kind of the only way right now to get underneath the bridge. But that, it's so close to the bridge that I, I don't know if, I think that would still be considered town property if it's. Uh, that little path is like right next to the road. Isn't that still the town right of way if it's from the center line? So this would be kind of like beyond that anyway, so I don't.
Yes, I, I'm not hearing any reasons why I would be against it. It seems like from my point of view, you, maybe take the next step of. Seeing what the next step is basically. And have we, has anybody looked into it to see? I mean, sometimes we think we own stuff that's on tech map, but we don't or like, across the street or whatever. Uh, uh, has anybody taken that step? Just to double check that we actually own it?
Yeah, I did a review of the deed information, so we do own the parcel the town does.
Do you know how long the town is?
Um, yeah, hold on one second. The town obtained it in October of 2008.
You don't happen to have, uh, how much we paid for it right there, do you?
We received it and I'm trying to get some feedback. Alberta is helping me interpret. It was a probate court decision. So the previous owner, uh, basically the estate was settled, but I don't have, uh, the exact detail. And Alberta's helping me just get that sorted out.
Okay.
I, it could be a situation where there were no heirs and it just was in limbo. And I, I don't know this level of detail, but I know obtained in October of 2008 and, uh, we're trying to figure out, um, what were the circumstances.
So, would it be fair to say that, that the board's not against pursuing this?
Sure. I have no problem with it.
Okay. So, um, would we further than direct Sean to continue gathering more information? About how such a sale might happen, what the price might be, what the restriction, like, uh, you know, we want to retain a. Right of way for the fire department and whatever.
Right, sounds good.
So Sean, you can keep pushing it forward.
Yeah, and, um, I did share with the board, the covenants of real estate as required for municipality. So obviously, as we move forward, we'd be working in the required notices and, um, I, there's a hearing. Uh, check that notices would be required.
In a waiting period, right?
Yeah, in a waiting period, that's correct. Uh, not, not a hearing, excuse me, but the, the proper notices. So I can, I, I can check back in with them and we'll go from there.
Yeah, so it sounds like the board generally agrees that Sean should keep pursuing this. And come back to us at a, at a later date with, uh, more info. Alright, great. Uh, next is item three and we're back to the budget again. We have, um, a recap of the draft budget and we'll have the rec budget. And I think Suzanne Gan just joined for that, so. AC or do. Was.
Yep, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay.
So I just need to save my minutes. Give me one second, I'll. Okay. Okay, should be all set. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I will let Suzanne talk about the recreation budget at first. And then we'll be going through them otherwise, so.
So I'm just.
Well, uh. Yeah, I can pretty much fit it. A level. A level funded budget and, uh, other than the youth program budget is decreasing, uh, based on some. Uh, numbers developed by Kaylee for the reach programming. Other than that, we'd like to maintain our budget. We realize that this year we might have a, a blip. Uh, where our budget isn't, you know, we're not utilizing our funds as much because of COVID. But, uh, we're hoping as soon as we're out of this that we're able to utilize those funds and. Really planning on doing some events that are, um. Hoping that people are going to want to come out and, and recreate together afterwards, so. Would like to see some level of funding.
I have a question. That I just don't understand. So the green up day, the, there's a line item here for green up day. But then there's also a line item in the, uh, in the town in another spot that I don't remember where. How does that work? Cause the solid waste district gives us a, an amount for green up day, does it not?
They give us a revenue and maybe that's the line you're seeing somewhere else. I'm, maybe Casey can talk to what you're seeing elsewhere, but this is.
Yes, I think what you're seeing is the revenue, Sherry. Now, there isn't an expense line for green up.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure this is where we put all the expenses.
In revenue.
Okay.
Yep, it's in the revenue, green up day grant. Um, so anything we get from them up, like the $400. Basically offsets the money that they spend on the recreation budget, but the green up day expense is only in recreation.
Okay, okay. I just didn't understand why. And then the fact that it was 174 now is just because this year was so weird.
Yeah, we didn't, uh, have as much trash to return. We didn't.
Right, right.
We didn't really advertise very much because we were a little bit concerned at the time, like, do we want big crowds? How do we do this? Are we?
Right, right.
So we, we played it really low key. We did have a turnout on green up day, but it wasn't over the top.
Right.
It was probably about what we wanted in a year like this, so.
Okay, okay. I just didn't understand why I was seeing it in two places and, and, yeah. And that the, the grant that they give us does not cover everything. Yeah.
Not usually. Usually we have a lot of money that goes towards tires in particular. This year we didn't have much in that area.
So I think it's possible that we could apply to the solid waste district municipal. That other category grant that might help us with either bulky trash or tires. It just depends on how we approach it.
I think this year, um, I believe All Metals donated the roll off too. They didn't like charge us for that.
Oh, wow.
And we also get, um, Casella allows us to take one of those roll offs to Coventry at no charge. For green up day, so that does reduce our expenses.
Cool.
Okay. Any other questions for Suzanne about the rec budget? Somehow I'm in a, some sort of, hang on, I can't, there, now we can see everyone. Alright.
Actually, Suzanne, I do have one quick question. Um, what do you anticipate for maintenance this year now that like. Playground is in place and, um, you know, all the wood, is it like wood chips? You have to renew those each year? What, I guess, um, and I know you have the porta potty would go under maintenance. Um, what else do you foresee in that category?
Yeah, we've been talking about some landscaping, um, at Mcville and also, uh. Possible upgrades to the ice rink equipment.
Okay.
Hey, just real quick, the, uh, Mcville playground is, uh, really nice. It's too bad we've had the year we had where we can't have a lot of people taking advantage of it. But the playground, uh, structure just looks really nice up there at Mcville, Suzanne. So thanks for your work on that.
Yeah, you're welcome. I think it came out really good and actually it was, uh, good timing for it to be installed. Every time I went by, people were on it. And I heard a lot about, it was at the same time that the school wasn't allowing anybody on their playground, which was. Just a personal opinion, a real big shame, uh, because people were looking to recreate outdoors. And it was something that was allowed by the governor, so, uh, eventually it was. So it was actually good timing. Once we opened it up, it was, it was really appreciated by people. So I hope people like it. Yeah.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Suzanne? Alright, thank you Suzanne.
Just a plug for a, a new event that we just, uh, released today. We're going to do a, a light it up. Along with the governor's, uh, suggestion and, uh, give prizes to folks who brighten up their houses with lights. And we'll be do, we'll be doing a judging on December 22nd.
Wiz, I don't suppose you have any, um, information about how they used to do, uh, uh, house decorating lights, the holiday thing? As I remember that my grandmother was often trying to win that prize, just saying.
But it's. There was, I think it was the Kiwanis that did it. I'm not sure, but, uh, there, there were house decoration. Prizes passed out. Um, we have a couple. I know this because of processing the pictures. There are pictures from the eighties of people who won the Christmas decoration prize.
That's funny, yeah.
Well, that's exciting.
Renewing a tradition, go for it.
Yep.
Yeah, they were not terribly elaborate.
To enter, you, you need to hit our Facebook page and, uh, post a picture and let us know that you want to be judged, so.
So you'll post stuff on Front Porch Forum or something about that for people? Great.
Yep, just posted tonight, so it should go out tomorrow. It's on our Facebook page.
Suzanne. I don't have a Facebook account and I have no intention of getting one. And I can't get into anybody's Facebook page without joining. So how are you going to help?
Forum.
People who are not members of Facebook but want to contribute, want to get involved in the country, in the, uh, contest.
Um, I'm certainly open to ideas, but I'm always open to people emailing me and saying, hey, I really want to participate. Can I? Send me your pic. I can post it for you.
Front Porch Forum will help a lot with that, being on Front Porch Forum, yeah.
And I can always post something like that too, Wiz, that says, hey, you know, if you're not on Facebook, let me know and I'm happy to enter for you.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that there had been something thought through because not everybody's on Facebook. A lot of people have actually abandoned Facebook because of their various policies.
Yeah, um, it's our first time running this event, so I'm sure we haven't thought of everything, but that's a really great suggestion and we'll, we'll include something for it. Yep.
Thanks Suzanne.
Welcome. Have a good night.
You. Alright, so now we're going to review the whole budget, right? Can you see, or do we have new stuff?
No, that's it. We're gonna, that we've basically been through all departments at this point. So, here's the summary. So.
Were you able to add the. Figures that Alberta supplied this afternoon?
Yes, over here in the tax rate, I updated the grand list and updated, um, last year's municipal rate here. And this is what it looks like right now.
And, um, you got the old harmless for, um, current use?
Yes, yep, I updated that to, um. The 163063 right here. That's what we received just barely last week.
Right, so that was actually, yeah, so that's what we received for 2021 budget year. And so we ought to feel that that's a, at least a baseline we could count on for the following year.
That's, yes, that's usually what we do is use that figure. Okay, so.
So that makes the revenue look a little better. So, we've been through everything once at this point. I don't know how other people are feeling, but I'm feeling that. That's a fairly hefty increase for a pandemic year.
I have a couple little questions.
Yeah, shoot.
Um, you know, that may be stupid, but, um, the dog license thing, you know, there, everybody's talking about how people are getting. Pets and dogs and et cetera because of the pandemic and all that stuff. And we seem to be going down in the dog licenses. Wouldn't we want to just stay flat with that? No?
Well, I think we did 2,500 because, um, in fiscal year 20, we only collected 2,000. So, um, some of that may be that people weren't licensing their new dogs, but.
Is that, is that maybe because we don't have enforcement right now or do we have someone that's?
We, we do. I mean, we do have some enforcement. We have Dean Mercer that's.
Oh, okay.
Very active, so, um, yeah, we, we do have that. Um, I mean, that's a thought, but.
Um, and then I, I was looking for it. Um, the solid waste district did a, uh. They lowered the fee this year, but it will go back to its regular amount next year. Um, does it, do we, do you see that somewhere? I, I didn't.
I think it's in appropriations, um.
Cause our, our membership fee or whatever per person?
Yeah, per cap, yes, I did see that. I'm going to just grab my other town report here. I believe that's under our appropriations. Actually, I don't believe it's in line items. Oh wait, yes, it is. Solid Waste District right here. I just have that. It is here, like, right here. It's right there. So 2956.
So is that, is the 2956 the four dollars per person? Or is it half of that? Or do you know what I mean? I, I, I don't know what the.
Uh, yes.
Per person, but I know that they made it, they cut it by half for.
Right, so for our current fiscal year, I think they only charge just like $1,500. So, right. So we're assuming that it's gonna, we'll have, you know, we'll have a savings in our current fiscal year. But we'll anticipate that for this fiscal budget 22, it will go back to normal.
Yeah, I think it will, yeah.
Okay.
Sherry, you have more?
My only other one is, um, I know that police recruitment is both in the general government. Rather than in the. police budget?
I think it's, isn't it, um, I thought that was, uh, I thought we moved it from the, the regular annual budget to a capital fund.
Okay, so it started out in capital. Um, the auditor said it should be moved out to regular. But we didn't want to take away what was built up in the capital. And, um, so we do, so we basically didn't budget any in the regular right here. But we still have a, a fund in the general capital here that has a balance in it, um, right?
Yeah, under general government.
Let me get down here. Right here. So it does have money. So, yeah, so it has some money and then we talked about whether we're gonna still build that up. The auditors still think it should be in the regular budget, but we ended up leaving it. Um, we, um, yeah, we left it there for now in capital.
Yeah, I just Why police budget? Why is it part of the police budget? It's police expense or whatever.
I think because what, the reason that it, that we wanted to move it down to the capital line, the capital fund was because, um, we didn't want to commit very much to it in any given budget year. And in order to let it build up to an appreciable level that, uh, this was at a time when Aaron was advocating for sign-on bonuses. And he probably still is. Um, and so this was a, a kind of a compromise solution. Like, we're not gonna put in ten thousand dollars a year into your annual budget, just in case you wanna make an offer. But we'll put five hundred bucks a year into a capital fund and then you could use it if you want.
Okay, yeah, I don't, yeah.
Yeah. I agree, whatever. Yeah, from an employer point of view, I think I'm not a huge fan of sign-on bonuses just because.
I can't say that I am either.
No, because you can try to recruit someone like that and they come for that bonus and then where they're looking around for the next bonus in a couple of years. And that happens to be with Homewood County Sheriff and not with Hartwick PD. Charity, you have more? Is that it?
No, I'm done.
I have a small list too, but I'm happy to let someone else go.
I would just like to know how much we have to take out in order to move. Basically, wh- what, how much is one percent of this budget to move it down a percent?
So that are, uh, probably about fifty grand, fifty, sixty maybe. I think, am I right or not?
No, it's fifty, fifty-seven, I thought. Fifty-seven hundred equal to a tenth of a percent the last time Casey and I talked.
Well, we got a hundred and sixteen thousand was three, three and a third percent. So it looks like it'd be more like, um, forty thousand would be a one percent roughly. Or sorry, one percent, no, it'd be thirty, uh, sorry, yes, it'd be right there. It'd be three thirty-five eighty-one, right? Maybe one percent.
Yeah, thirty-five thousand, yeah.
So I think it's meeting, we talked about how the goal in previous years have been to keep it somewhere below three percent. Is that right?
Yeah, and, and nicer if we were closer to two percent. Yeah. And I, I, my feeling is this year in particular, that it'd be nicer if it were a smaller increase. I guess I just, my feeling is that when May tenth hit last year, we were just entering COVID. Now we're gonna have like, by the time we hit May tenth next year, we're gonna have lived through a year of COVID. Which is, I think, and now it really feels like it's actually here. Um, and it's maybe having more impact. I don't know. So it, so my feeling, which is not based on a lot of data, is that I, you know, I'd like to have, see this come in a little lower this year. And I'm not usually the one to be saying that. I'm often the one to, uh, to be like, we, you know, we shouldn't cut the budget too tight and, um, that kind of thing. But this year I feel like it would be appropriate to
Well. I was looking at some of the capital funds that don't involve rolling stock. You know, wondering how much would it, how much damage would it do if we were to not put in whatever it is for the cemetery upgrade, if we were, if we were to not put in that four thousand dollars? And are there other places that, that are a good thing to do? And we don't want to discontinue the program, but if we don't fund it every year, tragedy does not strike.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was one of the questions I was wondering is if, um, that would be an area where you wanted to cut. Like if you're looking to cut that much money, um, it's difficult with the individual departments. We've kind of combed through them and hit two hundred and fifty dollars here, five hundred dollars here. But those don't add up that quickly. You could sit here all night and go through it line by line and pull a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there. But when you're looking to cut thirty-five thousand, um, it's almost like your capital has to.
Can we have a recap on that whole, um, vault door situation?
Sure, um, so, um, we, um, I know Eric just got an update from Alberta. Like she had had it kind of lined up to do that this year, but then COVID hit, so it didn't really work out. We have enough funds. So as of June thirtieth, we had about thirty-two thousand and then we just put in, so we have about forty thousand right now. We, the week actually combined records restoration slash vault door into one fund. Because the vault door would be considered part of records restoration. We got a legal opinion on that from our attorney. So we combine those two categories. We have about forty thousand now. The vault door is about twenty thousand. In addition to that, um, all the pages that are recorded, four dollars of each page is like stat, it has to go into records restoration. So for instance, in fiscal year twenty, we put about seventy-one hundred dollars in that. So we can anticipate probably a similar amount will get added to that records restoration. So, I mean, we're gonna, we, we have like forty in there now and so we, we may not need to add five every year. I mean, it's gonna be ongoing, but we have already started with the grant that Alberta got. We have done some already. The, the company's come and done some of that already.
And trim there.
Hey.
That is somewhere, yeah, that could possibly, yeah, that, that could be trimmed down.
That could be trimmed. Uh, alternatively, we could think about, um, using that for, um, digitizing more of the land records, um, because I think that the grant, um, amount would not, I don't think it's enough to actually, does it bring us, maybe brings us back forty years? I think maybe that was the bar that was set.
Yes.
I think, I think we got the, I think we got the forty.
We did, we did.
And the, and actually, uh, folks are using that service as, as of now.
Oh, it's up?
Yep.
Oh. How do you find it?
Yeah.
On the website?
I think so.
Okay. Alright.
Sorry, sorry, different department, sorry. Town clerk's webpage.
Yeah, yeah. But you know, that's a, I think a good thing, having done, tried to do some deed research recently for that River Street issue. Not the deeds themselves, but the index is like, just trying to find things is difficult. So would be nice to have more of that done. But Alberta did say that she would get the vault door done next year. I asked her about that today.
Yeah, in the spring, yes.
So that we could put behind us and know that was done and that's, yeah. If folks don't mind, I may, I have a few things that maybe ones that like Sherry, so I'm just gonna ask the question and maybe they, we don't end up doing anything. In the highway department, we have, um, ninety thousand budgeted for salt and the last actual was eighty thousand. Is there any way we could bring that down to like eighty-five?
Is, Tom, are you still on the line? Cause I think you and I talked a little bit about that. I mean, it's sort of anybody's guess, but.
Well, as low as you know, Eric, it's a crapshoot, so. You know, if you lower it down, we go over, we go over, so.
Right, yeah.
All because the year before that, I think we spent a hundred and something thousand.
Yes, I believe so, uh huh. Yeah, I think it was like one oh two, it's about one oh two, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was icy and the cost of salt was high.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So right now salt is about seventy-two dollars a ton. So right now, you know, if everything goes well, if we only do a thousand ton, you know, we spend seventy-two thousand dollars this year. But, you know, wait and see on the weather. That's always a crapshoot, Eric.
I know it. I do know it.
Yep.
But we could do, we could do that and like you said, it might get overspent, but it might not too.
Right, right. I mean, you never know, so.
Right. Thank you. I have, um, some questions on the police department budget too. It did strike me that, um, we're looking at a total, like the net of the budget and the revenues. We've got a net of about, um, hundred and sixteen thousand or something that we're, that, you know, for the total budget. And of that, you could look and say, well, police budget's going up twenty-five thousand and we lost twenty thousand in revenue by losing the SIU grant. So of our total increase, you know, that's forty-five thousand of it right there. So I was wondering, like up near the top of the police budget, and I think I've asked this before, but the overtime, the, so the salaries are up and I think that's because we're fully staffed now. But we're still holding on to a pretty high overtime line up there. Could you scroll up, Casey?
Yeah.
Have most of the new people gone through the academy? Are they actually on the job?
Yes, um, one, the newest officer, she's still, um, I think she's doing like training, she's doing work and I don't, I don't know if she's like doing part-time academy. I'm not really sure, and I would have to answer that, but she is doing, you know, shifts with, yeah.
So her, her salary, like our base payroll is a hundred thousand more than our last actual. Right?
Yeah, because we didn't, we had two vacant positions, yeah.
So it seems to me, and I know I asked this last time and I know Aaron's a, he's, he's, um, good about trying to manage his budget, as Tom is too. I know these guys are good at managing to their budget. But it, I just wonder, could we drop that seventy-five thousand for overtime? We had it at sixty last year. Does it really need to, I know that the seventy-five is likely trying to adjust it to our last actual. But since our base payroll is up because we have full-time people, could we drop? Do we, do we really, are we really, we really need that much overtime?
So I actually have a calculation. I can't really show it on my screen because it would have too much like sensitive information, employee individuals, but I actually have calculations where, um, you know, you're estimating all your holidays, your vacation, your whatever. And so then you're calculating the coverage, the number of coverage hours at overtime rates to, you know, to cover those shifts. That's where that number comes from. So, and actually the, the actual number is a little bit higher than seventy-five. So we settled on the seventy-five. So it's, it's kind of like formula based. We could come down on it, but we're probably gonna go over then. And nobody spent seventy-five in fiscal year twenty. And I did actually have Amanda give me a quarterly update on what we had spent, you know, for the first part of twenty-one year to date. And we're pretty well on track at that pace to, to, to be there.
Okay.
So.
Well, okay. The other thing I was looking at in this budget is, could we move gasoline line from thirteen thousand to nine thousand?
We could move it down. Um, I know we talked, I know we talked about that last time with Aaron was that, um, COVID was driving that down, um, just because there was a period of time when they weren't really doing serious patrols, um, earlier in the year. There's probably room to go down on it. Yeah, maybe, maybe to like eleven or something.
Let me just back, where were we on in our? What's the actual from the year before? Yeah, maybe I'm maybe I'm wrong. Yeah, so yeah, so the year before, yeah, the year before was thirteen.
Yeah. So.
Although the price of gas is down.
Correct, yes. Um, I mean, I, I don't know if we want to go to nine, but we could maybe do eleven. For
Let's try, let's try that.
Yeah, um, I have two others highlighted. Those were just ones that you mentioned last time. And I said I would just mark them for future discussion.
Yeah. And I can't remember. I know I asked the question on training because.
Training, he said there's a lot of new stuff coming in the pipeline. Um, twenty, he thought was just an off year. I already know that there's been some, they've probably spent half of their budget already this year on some firearms trainings and some other, other trainings that they've had classes that they went to and such. So, um, I guess that was, and I think he wanted to keep it there just because he knows that there's gonna be some, some trainings coming up.
Yeah, so it looks like the year before, um, they used two, two, well, about twenty-three hundred the year before.
Yeah.
Wonder why are also looking back the year before, overtime used to be fifty-one thousand and eighteen nineteen? Was the
Less officers, less officers. This is overtime based on a full staff too, like overtime for all people, I guess, and.
But it seems like with a full staff, you'd have less need for overtime.
Yeah.
Still have to cover shifts when they have time off though.
Yeah, but if you're having the same amount of coverage, you have to cover the same amount of hours. So are they covering, are there more officers on more time? Is that what's happening?
I don't believe so, but I don't feel comfortable answering that. I think Aaron would need to address that because I don't know how they do their scheduling.
Yeah.
So.
But, but you said that when you calculated out the coverage necessary, the overtime necessary to cover the shifts that are predicted.
Right, you, you have to look at the day, the vacation days and the holidays and all of that. And you have to figure in coverage. And I actually, I'd figured coverage for six officers, not eight officers, because some are working anyway. So, um, yeah, and, um, yeah, so.
Okay. Alright, well, it didn't get us very far. Um, I had, uh, another question on the line items.
Sure.
So, um, we had, uh, I think I asked you this last time. It looks to me the jump from, um, the nineteen twenty actual to last year's budget and then carried forward in this. The nineteen-twenty actual to last year's budget and then carried forward in this year, it looks to me like the jump to include a single audit.
Correct.
Is that, and is the single audit for a particular? Project?
We would assume Yellow Barn would need the single audit, yeah.
So I think Yellow Barn has in its budget money to reimburse the town for a single audit.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then um, that could be lowered if we can exclude the single audit for that. That's, that would be the only thing I would anticipate needing it for.
Sean, Sean, do you, do you have any recollection that would contradict my thinking there? That it's in the budget for the Yellow Barn to pay for that single audit?
It does ring a bell, Eric, but I'd have to go back and check some notes.
Okay.
I think you're on target.
I think, I think we could drop that.
We could go to thirteen, we could go to thirteen because we could assume it's around twenty-six. And water and sewer each pay twenty-five percent of it, so we'd be able to go to thirteen. Cause we're twenty-four this year, assuming twenty-one would be another thousand and then another thousand and twenty-two. I, I think that thirteen would be okay there. If, if, if the Yellow Barn is gonna cover the single audit, then yes, that we could do that.
I think it is and should.
Okay, that's the only grant like that I could, I mean, unless we.
Unless we got one for the bridge.
Right.
Casey, I lost track. What's the, what's that threshold for the single audit? I've lost track.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand in expenses. So even like if you get awarded something like during the year, like if you don't, it's, it's when you actually expend it. And it's seven hundred and fifty thousand, exceeding seven hundred and fifty thousand in a year.
But do you only need one single audit? So like if. So let's say Yellow Barn happens as scheduled and we also um, to replace the bridge, do we just need one single audit?
Correct, it's, it's, you have to have a single audit, right? If just the town of Hardwick has a single audit, if we have cumulatively expenses that exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand, yes.
And since.
It's not like per project or anything.
Right, that was my question. So great, so yeah, so if Yellow Barn pushes us over, Yellow Barn's paying for it and if there happens to be other. Grant stuff in there, then away we go.
I think we gotta run some numbers because we got Judavine, we've got the outstanding USDA, uh, we've got um.
Oh, right.
Just came to mind and I just lost track of it.
You're right.
I think we had to run some numbers.
Is Judi.
Right, so Judavine, we've got VCDP and USDA, they have two. And then we've got the other hundred and seventy-five USDA, the one that we're trying to re, you know, reallocate. So those right there. But it, I mean, essentially though, I still think it would be Yellow Barn that pushed us over. Cause even those three alone and you add in the cops grant and stuff, we, we'd probably still be only around maybe five hundred if they all came to fruition. So I, I still think it would be Yellow Barn that would put us over.
Is this last, is this year, um, the last year of the cops grant, the one, the budget you're working on?
We have fifteen or sixteen months left, so it'll almost be done by the time this one starts, yes.
So in the following year. So not the budget we're working on, but then for next year's budget.
Fiscal year twenty-three, that'll be gone, correct?
So we'll see.
The other thing to keep in mind is that I am, uh, and we could play with this a little bit, but in the, in the police base salary. Normally you would back out your cops position from that, um, because it's down as a separate expense. However, in order to ease that into our regular budget, once the grant runs out, I have actually, um. I didn't subtract all of it. I only subtracted a portion of it so that we're not having a great big jump one year. Where all of a sudden, there's no cops expense, but it all moves into base salary. So we could, we could go down a little bit on that probably.
On the base salary?
Yes, because like I said, I didn't back out the entire cops grant position simply to ease it into the budget. Because eventually it's gonna all be in base salary and not in cops, if that, if you, if that makes sense.
It does. So how much is in there now that's easing?
Um, I'm just gonna stop my share for a sec because I need to go to another tab, so and it has sensitive information, so okay. Just gonna go. Over here and take a look. Okay, so what I, what I did was, so the cops grant pays seventy-five percent of that salary. I subtracted only twenty thousand, so. We could do. So rather than, like I said, subtracting the whole, um, say it's, let's say it's fifty thousand, I didn't subtract fifty thousand, I only subtracted twenty. So that it's not as much of a hit when the next budget rolls around and we have to put the whole position into base salary.
Yep, got it, so there's like.
So essentially, I mean, I could. I mean, we could, we could go down, I mean, we could add that back in for this, I mean, subtract it for this year and. But.
And it's a big hit next year, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's the only thing, or maybe we could probably do ten thousand less to sort of split it up. That's, I've just been trying to ease that into the budget because we don't want it to be a big hit one year.
Yep, but there's, but what you're telling us is there's about thirty thousand, that, that the base salary is padded up about thirty thousand. This year in this budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's us, there's some additional information on the single audit, Casey, I found some email exchange that we had from the summer and we had NBRC at two hundred and fifty thousand. That's for Yellow Barn, right? That's, I believe the cops was fifty, Bridgeman reservoir is a factor as well.
Right, so in, in fiscal year twenty, we didn't need a single audit because we, we were close for like six ninety-nine or something, but we, we didn't need one. And depending on when Yellow Barn comes to fruition, we may or may not need one in twenty-one. But by twenty-two, I would say that probably Yellow Barn will be happening then.
Right, actually, so let me just. Yeah, let me just think, so we're gonna be.
I was trying to, I was trying to, I was trying to find that, Eric, and I just couldn't find it. I'm looking as we're talking for Yellow Barn.
Yeah, so Yellow Barn's gonna be spending down money starting. In the grant money, I think, is gonna be starting October of twenty-one through October of twenty-two. So most of it is gonna be in that.
In this, in this budget, fiscal year twenty-two.
Yes, yeah. And that's gonna be, that's gonna easily put us over into single audit territory and I. I'm pretty sure that's in the budget for Yellow Barn, although I'd have to verify that. All right, so. So we could potentially, we have some room in police department base salaries. Yeah, I just had a couple.
I would suggest we don't do, if we do it, we maybe do it by like ten thousand, just because we don't want to see a great big jump. In the following year as we ease that in, so.
Kaylee, are you raising your hand or?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a general comment. I think it would be great to get the police budget below a million if we can, or at least close to a million. And to Eric's comment earlier, I think if we can get below three percent. That would be awesome too. It sounds like there might be some wiggle room there, Casey. And then if there are any other places we were talking about earlier where we're potentially padding, if that is a way to. Add a little bit less for this year. I know that that has implications in the future. We don't generally want to do that as a rule of thumb. But it might save us from cutting, cutting things that we may need.
We, we, Casey is with departments, uh, we've really looked at this really closely, so I, I don't, I guess I'm gonna just say this. I don't want it being put back on us to, you know, completely solve finding this one percent. We really need to just have the group involved here.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's the. Feel like that's the exercise we're in right now.
Yeah, understood.
I had. A couple other things that I thought were possible. In the, back in the line items. We have a big old increase for our capital road contribution. It's twenty-five thousand increase and I know what's driving that. I know that it's, we're trying to brace ourselves for paving, paving center road, which is gonna be really expensive.
Yeah, this is what it looks like, yeah, so.
But. But I, you know, we could consider not contributing. Quite as much. You know? Okay, and I have, I'll just run through the other ideas I had. So I thought about bringing that down instead of putting twenty-five thousand more in there to bring it. To just put in twenty thousand more. So bring it down five grand. I also wondered about, I mean, again, this is a lot like. Like the salt thing, but we have a hazard mitigation line for seven thousand. I thought about maybe bringing that down to five. Again, that's playing with, you know, it's just rolling the dice because that's what we usually use if we have to clear ice out of the river. Some years, we have to do it and some years we don't and. We could gamble that maybe we don't need all seven thousand. What else did I have?
I just wanna, I, I made the five thousand roads and the hazard mitigation, just wanna see where we're at now.
Can you share that?
Yep, um. Two point seven six, we're making some progress.
We have, we also.
I can't see your screen, Casey.
Oh, that's why I forgot I stopped screen share for a minute. Let me go back, I'm sorry.
Eric, are we just, uh, or, or is the objective with some of the discussion now is just we're attempting to find one percent?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not magical one percent, but you know, if we could get our. Tax increase under three percent, I think that would be much more palatable, so.
I mean, there's another way you can go about this, just how many line items do we have and, you know, run the math and just right across every line item. Let's, you know, get that, you know, just whatever that is, you know, fifty bucks right across the line items, maybe gets us there or whatever that number is.
That's true of everything.
Cause, you know, what I recall from previous discussions about budgets is, you know, we don't want to get into this exercise where we're taking eight hours to critically review every line item, right?
Right. Yeah, right.
Um, the information from Alberta about the grand list and about the tax rate. Has she heard yet from the state? Because. I'm one of those people that gets, um. That has a low enough income that I have a, uh, the homestead thing is, plays in. And those, those letters still haven't come out yet, adjusting our tax rate. Did, did she get that information yet from the state? Cause it was way behind and as far as I know, she still doesn't have it. So I wonder if we're even working with the, like the real thing. I know that we never have the grand list amount until like. March or May or something like that anyway, and we're always guessing at it, but I just wonder whether. And she's not here, so we can't ask her, so I don't know. I'll call her tomorrow.
Yeah, she didn't mention anything about that and I didn't, I only asked her about. A couple, couple things.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
To your point, Sean, um, I'm just looking at the budget summary for all the different departments. And it looks like there are two departments in particular that are. That are higher, which is office expenses and line items. Could we take those two departments and essentially? Do what you're saying, take out, like, split it across each line item to get that percentage down to three percent? And would that? Would that then be enough to? Bring our percentage down in total?
Sorry, why, why were you looking at those two in particular?
Because, so in the budget summary. In the budget summary, those are the two that are the highest increase. So there are actually quite a few departments that are lower.
Police, police is higher than office expenses.
And.
It's twenty-three thousand, seven hundred of police and twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, what I was advocating is not necessarily trying to get where Casey is now on these departments. I was not saying that we need to have these, uh, these increases aligned in that F column. What I was saying is looking at everything above and just right across the board, apply, apply a variable to get this thirty, to find this thirty-six thousand we're looking for.
Well, we're looking for less than that now, because we, we think we've, I've already done maybe fifteen thousand or more.
Casey, I think you went into a tunnel.
Yep.
Can't hear you.
How about now?
Hmm, you're, you're very far away.
Yeah, can just barely hear you.
I think you were saying that, um, you, you have made some of these adjustments that we just talked through and that's changed our. Situation somewhat. I know, so I know this is not the direction you were steering, Sean, but I did have a couple other. Things that I did kind of poke through the whole thing line by line today. And a couple of things that I thought of were that we are adding brand new expenses for the nine-one-one signs. And for the um. Equity committee, we have those both in there and I think Kaylee, you were gonna work on um, budget for what that. Would equity committee money would be used for?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring that to the next meeting, Eric, because we have a meeting on Monday.
Okay. All right, I mean, I know both. Both those things are important things, but. They're just, you know, new additions to. Maybe we could put off something. And then the only other thing I, that caught my eye is. And maybe I'm off base, but in the library budget, the custodial services line is like ninety, ninety-three hundred dollars, which is comparable to the memorial building. Which is ninety-eight, police is fifty-eight. And I just did, does anybody know if that? Number for the library is where we need to be for. Seems like on a square, I don't know if it's a square footage basis or not really.
That's, that's, um, that's based on the addition.
Yeah.
Casey, I don't, we can't hear you, Casey, um, but what the, the, we, Casey did check in with Lisa on this particular one, so I believe that number is good.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Yeah.
That custodial line item is assuming that the, so that for July one. Of next year, that would be for the full year of the building being complete.
It's just a portion of the year.
So that ninety-three hundred is just a portion of the custodial for the year?
Yeah.
That does, that seems high, doesn't it?
Well, is the construction, when is it gonna be done? And, um, but she said that this was for like six months and I'm, so yeah, I'm not sure.
Did you get that, Eric?
Yeah, that she said it was for six months, but.
That's, that's what they said, because I also wondered why it was such a big increase. If, because the construction is gonna be, you know, probably not done until halfway through this fiscal budget.
So. Yeah, all right, maybe it just. So, yeah, all right, maybe it just is what it is, but those are. Yeah, okay. Another option that I think we have that I hesitate to use, but I think somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we would have the option to to basically assume that we're gonna draw down our, our our fund or reserve or fund balance a little bit. And it's a kind of a extreme option to take because because it's sort of falsely lowers, you can't do it forever. And it, and it lowered, you're just using some of your savings to pay for some of your annual expenses. But on the other hand, the purpose of maintaining the fund balance is sort of a rainy day fund and I don't know, maybe it's a rainy day.
Maybe I've forgotten how this works. That would not surprise me one bit. But there was, there was one year, quite a few years ago, probably eight or so, where there was a lot of discussion about the library and whether or not they could pull, do they have a separate fund balance of some sort? And maybe some of these added expenses for them could actually go into that place because they're, they have a different sort of standing as a municipal library. No?
Yeah, there it is. On the bottom, they have a fund balance of almost five thousand and we.
That was as of six thirty.
So you are correct, Sherry, in the past.
So.
I believe that used to be bigger and we used to short fund them, causing that fund balance to go down.
Right.
And, and it seems like we could, we could do that, we could do that.
Part of it to cover some of these extra that have really bumped it up. I mean, I, I don't like that. I don't like doing that because I know that they haven't. My understanding is they haven't really like figured out exactly all the interior. You know, like costs of the, all of the interior stuff for the new addition. But my assumption is that going forward, they're going to continue to work to get grants or get, get other support for those things, some of those things as well. I mean, I wouldn't want to clean it out, but it seems like we could use some of it because it's there.
True, maybe.
I mean, the difference in custodial expenses would be, would be almost perfect.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
The difference in custodial expenses is going to be there next year as well.
Yeah.
There's sort of the same logic about that as there is about the cops grant.
Right.
Easing, easing it in, yeah.
But I have no problem pulling stuff out of our own fund balance. Again, this is probably the rainiest day that we're going to live through in our memory and it seems like we have a rainy day fund that maybe we should should pull one percent or of this budget out of it and just let the town know. That's why we, why we collect this money, so that we can respond in an emergency.
Yeah. Just another, you know, note and why we're trying to push this down. Sean has said that he heard that the, the state is predicting, I guess, an average increase of the school tax. It's more like nine percent. Kaylee's nodding.
Yep.
So given that on our tax bills, that's something like sixty percent of the tax bill is education. That has a bigger effect on the tax bill than anything we do here. But better not to be additive, better not to like, you know, add our increase to theirs. So did you, so we're looking at the summary again. Casey, you're showing us the summary. Did you take anything out of the police base salary or not?
No, I can do, I can do ten thousand for right now. That helps like twenty seven basis points or so, I think. So making a little progress.
Casey, make sure that does, that is workable, right? I mean, we don't want, we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot here. That's workable.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And she said it was padded up by thirty, so.
Yeah.
Pumping it down ten is, still leaves it padded up by twenty.
Below two point five percent seems pretty, pretty close to what we were working towards, right?
Yeah, it's too bad that the increase in revenue doesn't, you know, is, is so low.
And keep in mind, so assuming that the police department's budget is lower, that's going to change our revenue because the Greensboro contract is presumably going to be based on a percentage. So that would lower our revenue as well.
Yes, by, by twenty four hundred dollars, actually.
Might be some more ticketing moving forward.
How long did you live in the South? There's certainly opportunity for it.
Just visited there and I know, I know you keep within the speed limit in the South.
Wow, so when you did that, are, are.
Oh, no, that's, I gotta fix that because I forgot that it's not straightforward. It's the budget and then it's plus capital, plus public safety, minus dispatch. So, yeah, it's only going to be a difference. It would be a difference of twenty four hundred from what it was. So, yeah. There we go.
Okay. What is? All right, is everybody sick of this for tonight?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody really want to stay with it?
I mean, you know, I mean, I think we're.
All right, so let's leave it here for now. We have the only other thing I wanted to say during this section is Alberta is I think she's going to come to us, or I think it's the first meeting in January that she's going to bring to us options for town meeting. I think is when we're going to have that discussion with her, right?
That sounds right, Eric.
Because we have the option to do it all on Australian ballot and it's, as you might imagine, it would, it would be one wicked long Australian ballot. So. Anyway, so she'll come then, so we yeah, we wouldn't need to have our budget totally finalized before then.
Pretty close to that date, though.
Yeah, but we can leave it for tonight. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Casey, for displaying everything and making those changes on the fly. Next up is item four, select board to discuss newspaper of record for the town. So this is something that came up for whenever we post notices. State statute says we have to post them in a newspaper of record. It's quite clear and apparently as of now, it's not considered okay that that newspaper is online. So Hardwick Gazette is not our newspaper of record. So we need to have a newspaper of record. And I guess I would propose that we also continue to put the same notices in the Gazette that we would, that we're going to have to now put somewhere else. Because even though the Gazette can't be our newspaper of record, I think it really effectively is what people are going to look at. So it's going to be like a double posting and maybe, I don't know, for some things, probably Sean's office would look to also post things in the front porch forum like he's been doing additionally.
Yeah, and for the good of the conversation, we, you know, we continue to advertise with the Gazette. It's just certain legal notices, you know, such as votes for bonding, hearings, yeah, tax sales, things like this. Just, yeah, again, for the record, you know, we're trying to arrest to support our local paper here.
So for a newspaper of record that's actually in print, the closest ones that come to mind are the News and Citizen out of Morrisville and the Caledonian Record, right?
Casey.
Their advertising rate.
Excuse me. That's what I was just going to say to Casey. We were checking in on this earlier.
I'd have to look it up. I tend to. I almost think the weekly might be a little less than the daily, but I, I'd honestly have to look at some recent invoices to compare prices. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think both of those papers are weekly.
No, the Caledonian Record is sixth editions a week, I believe, and then News and Citizen is every Thursday.
Okay, yeah, I had the Chronicle, the Chronicle in my mind, the Barton Chronicle, which is a weekly.
But News and Citizen is a free paper now.
Yes, that's correct.
So.
More people get it.
That was my, that was the theory that I was developing. But I can't say that I personally read it, but I do get it.
It works really well for starting fires too, at least that it comes.
I see that Ray is on the call. Does he have anything to offer or Doug? I don't know. Does it matter? I don't know.
Not, not really. I was instructed to be here by Dawn in the newsroom in case there were some questions that needed to be answered. I, I covered this issue with Sean in September and he said, you know, it has to be a printed paper. And for, as far as I'm concerned, that, that closed the topic for us. If, if we were to go back to print, we'd be out of business. So that's, that's not in the offing. Where by stopping printing, we have reduced our losses considerably. But, yeah, it's, it's, you know, based on the understanding that we have to be in print, we're not really part of this discussion, unfortunately.
But we will, I mean, as previously stated, we still want to be posting stuff in the Gazette.
Can I offer one other thing for Ray? And Ray, that is, this is something that maybe you want to touch, you know, check in with the representatives if there's something they want to take up in this legislative session because it's not unique to the Gazette. We've got other papers and publications having to do the same thing. So just for what it's worth, maybe we want to pick this up with your representatives and say, will you guys consider making a change? That would allow for digital edition.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point because there are a number of papers like ours that have gone digital only. And then there are a number of papers that have gone out of business. So, good point. Thank you, Sean.
So newspaper of record, do we want to pick one? Or do you want to wait and come back to what's cheaper?
I would like more information about the ad rates before making a decision.
I don't think we have anything in advance in the December seventeenth meeting that would be, you know, critically driven by this discussion. So I think we could get, Casey could double check some numbers and Casey's just sound right, we could get numbers back from the meeting on the seventeenth.
Yeah, actually, if you give me a second here, I could actually pull up accounts payable and look at like the CDC ad that we put in both places and just see what, I, I could just look at that one ad and there was another ad that we put in both. So I'll pull them up as a vendor real quick here and just see. Were you able to get any of that?
Yep.
Yeah, you, your volume increases as you speak.
Okay. I gotta. Okay, all right. I got a mess, I got a message that said my internet connection was unstable. So like, okay, hopefully you heard me. All right.
Well, while we're waiting for the numbers, just one thing I want to say that I think there is some, you know, basically same thing that Sherry said. I think there's some benefit to the paper that actually shows up in Hardwick already. Assume because it shows up, the News and Citizen probably does get read more, even if it's.
You don't have to be a subscriber that it might actually get seen more. So I'd be inclined to just say News and Citizen would be a good idea since we're going to continue with the Gazette anyway. Let's just do the News and Citizen.
Yeah, I'd agree with that too.
Is that a motion?
Sure, why not?
Sherry made a motion.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Lucian made a second.
We should check our numbers here, is my observation.
Well, we can have that during discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like, so on the CDC advertising, the Caledonian Record, I think I ran it twice and it was a hundred and eighty six dollars. And then the News and Citizen would have been also, I think, two weeks for like a hundred and thirty five. So it does seem like they're cheaper.
I retract my comment.
Sounds good. Now we got that, we got that info. Any more discussion on the motion is to establish the News and Citizen as our newspaper of record for posting notices? Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, I think everyone voted aye, so that's Wiz, Kaylee, Sherry, Lucian, me. So there we go. News and Citizen it is. Thank you. Next is item five, select word to sign off on. CWSRF. This is the state revolving fund is a lot, last water, clean water, state revolving fund. Step two, plan loan application for the wastewater treatment facility improvements. So we have some Sean must have some paperwork for us that's come in to keep this process moving along.
Yeah, we have the we have the, what's referred to as the step two application. So we have that completed. That, let's see, I'm pretty sure I put that in the Google Drive, right, Casey?
It's there. I put the whole application there and Aldridge and Elliot has already reviewed it and sort of given their blessing for it. And it just has to be, you know, signed off by the select board and we'll go ahead and submit that. Yeah.
Do we have to actually sign, sign it or?
No, so page twelve is looking for signatures, so I don't know how we'll do that, but I have something else for you guys to sign from a previous meeting. So maybe we could coordinate at the beginning of the week to meet up at the office and get a few things signed. I don't know if that works for people or not, but.
If I need to shepherd it around, Casey, I can do that.
Or if there's a way for you to just put it, you know, so that we don't all have to come and group up together. It could be somewhere where we could sign it.
I'm okay with that, just saying, we're open.
What about? Yeah. That would work.
For me.
So it's in the. So it's in the Google Drive, Sherry. Are you able to just, I actually have it there as the signature page. So maybe if you're able.
I can print it.
Print that.
I could print it to help here, Casey, and get it to Sherry so she doesn't have to deal with it.
Okay, and I have another form that I wanted them to sign too. So I'll send that to you, Sean, so.
Yeah, and for the board, just make sure you are looking at the complete app just to get, you know, get the understanding on this and then we'll leave the, uh, we'll leave the signature page, um, with Sherry. And then, uh, there's, there's one other item here too, right, Casey?
So before we move on though, maybe we could have a, just a vote so that's in our minutes that we.
Yeah, we do need that to, yes, yep, definitely need that.
So if somebody could make a motion that we, uh, move forward with the step two application for the wastewater treatment facility.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was everyone I saw with me, Kaylee, Sherry and Lucian's I heard. So good. All right. And then the other thing that's related to this. Is what?
Is to authorize Sean to sign off on the engineering services agreement, um, with Aldridge and Elliot once it's approved by the state. Because it's been sent to them and so it's just pending their approval, but that way we don't have to wait until the seventeenth if you could do it now.
It's been sent to the state.
Yes.
You know, obviously. For the state, uh, clean water state revolving fund staff to review.
But presuming it will come back prior to your next select board meeting, if you'd be able to give Sean the authorization to move forward with that.
I move that we give Sean the authorization to move forward with the. Whatever.
Engineering, engineering.
Agreements, yeah.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 I think that's everyone again. Okay. Okay, that's everybody. Great. Awesome. Select board reports. I'll give a short yellow barn one, which is we, we're still moving along. Yellow barns waiting to hear back from, uh, we have a grant application into Northern Borders Regional Commission. For a grant that's competitive across the whole northern or north, at least the northeastern section. So it's fairly competitive, but hoping that we're in good position. We also just met with. Vermont Community Loan Fund who's very interested in, um, filling the final, um, financing gap. So. Pretty big progress there. Um, and we'll know about the N B R C grant by the end of the month. Any other?
The townhouse has begun its annual appeal. Uh, we're working on a little capital campaign for the. For the, um, project that is hopefully gonna. Get started sometime next fall, depending on the grants that we line up. Um, it was good news that the Paul Bruin, uh, the Preservation Trust Paul Bruin Grant. They extended their deadline to, now I can't remember when. December something. Seventeenth or something. Sean, you don't remember, do you? Anyway.
Yeah, mid, uh, mid-January.
Seventeenth, so.
Sounds right.
And we're, uh, looking at combining the roof, the needed roof repair with that because that's one of the things that that. Particular fund likes to, um, fund, so. Yeah. Right. That's all that's happening, a lot and nothing at all.
Any other select board reports? New business or old business?
I did check the, uh, Downs, Ratcliffe and Martin website and they're, uh, they're, they haven't made an adjustment. So they are showing the balloon test for. Saturday, December five from nine until one P M with the backup of Sunday. And I'm gonna give you the most current, uh, NOAA weather forecast I can find just updated as of, I think, seven, uh, seven o'clock. And it says for Saturday. For the Hardwick location of fifty percent chance of snow after two. But up until then, partly sunny with a high near thirty seven light and variable winds. So it looks like it, you know, Saturday might be conducive. So it seems to be lining up right now.
All right, get your cameras ready. Kaylee.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, ask a couple of questions about, um, the A T and T project, not big questions. One was, and Sean, you might have more information on this, but, um. And I haven't looked at it myself, but as, as far as I've been told, right now. The public can put a public comment on the P U C website, but it is just for the extension until this Friday. And then it will be open for general comments. Is that, um? Correct? To your knowledge?
You have me at disadvantage. I'm not sure. Um, my understanding with the process of the. Public comment being extended. I I'm at a disadvantage. I do not know the answer to the question.
Sure, yeah, no, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just, I was just wasn't sure if you had more information, um, about that. Um, so, but it. Does sound like if, if that's the case, if somebody in the community decides to write public comment and it's just for the. Extension, then, um. Then there will be an opportunity to provide general comments. It sounds like as soon as that's processed. So I was just.
So are you saying there's actually public comment period for the extension?
Correct. That's what, that's what my understanding is.
Wow, that's a lot of process.
It's a lot of public comment, a lot of process.
Process. All we asked was more time for public comments and now we have to have public comments on the request for more public comments. Okay.
Um, and there is a, uh. Group Friends of Buffalo Mountain that has formed to help anybody with making public comment. There's been lots of Front Porch Forum flurry about that, but there, it sounds like there are some community members. It's a, it's fairly. Complicated because it is a state website. So if anybody needs help. Figuring out how to do that, it sounds like there's a group there to help. Um. And, um. Their. Email is friends of Buffalo Mountain at, and it's the. Back part that's kind of tricky. Um, it's at I G C dot O R G. So not Gmail. Um, so I just want to mention that. And then I also had a question at the last like we're meeting that we talked about this. We mentioned having a special meeting or more of an informational meeting or potentially A T and T could be there to. Answer questions about the documentation that they provided to the select board. If we have, uh, the meeting on the seventeenth and then the meeting on the seventh. Seems like we might want to schedule a special meeting, uh, sooner rather than later, if that is in fact what we would like to do.
I know we talked about this last time, but can you remind me why we want to have a special meeting?
Well, it was brought up that there is a lot of information that is on the town website and is information that we've been talking about that, um. Might be beneficial to have just, um. An opportunity for community members to dig into that a little bit more and ask more questions about it. And that there was a. Emergency Planning Commission meeting about, about this and there's a lot discussed at that meeting and. I just wasn't sure. It's just something that had come up at the meeting and I didn't know if it was something that the. Select board necessarily needed to organize or if it could be something that the planning commission or a different, um. Maybe even A T and T could potentially host it.
Could. It seems more likely that it would happen if, if either we did or the. Thoughts from others? Crickets.
I did, I have heard, um, just this afternoon that East Montpelier is also, um, struggling with a very similar issue. With A T and T wanting to build a tower that, uh, doesn't seem to have much reach to anybody, but, um. Yeah. So their select board was discussing it tonight also, and they've also gotten an extension. And there, uh, they have quite a few people who are not interested in seeing that happen on Route fourteen. Just saying.
And I think Eric, the special meeting, the, the purpose of that was to inform the community, um, and to. Provide an opportunity for community members to ask questions and get answers to those questions. It could potentially be the kind of thing that we organize as the select board. But then invite A T and T similar to our last meeting, but in a more, but. In a specific focus on that where they could really answer some of those, some of those questions, um, and maybe as well, maybe Kristen or the planning commission could answer some of the environmental. Questions as well. So it was just something that came up, um, and I'm just a little. You know, there's not that much time, um, before January thirteenth. So if we were able to get something like that on the books. For either before our January seventh meeting or before the seventeenth meeting, it seems like that might be. Really good for the community.
Let's do December thirty first.
Um, and I'm, I would be happy to reach out if it makes sense. I don't know. To A T and T to just see if it's something that they'd be interested in because I feel like they can answer a lot more of the questions around. Coverage and things like that than, um, so I'm happy to help with that if that makes sense.
I'm just wondering.
Janil that we would talk with.
Sorry. Casey, did you say something?
Oh, I just said that it would be Janil that we would work with if we were gonna do something like that probably because she's their rep.
Yep. Or, um, Beth from. She seemed to have. Beth seemed to have ready to present a bunch of stuff last time and we didn't. Having her do that. I'm just wondering. I, the, if, since the, so I had thought we might hear back. In a more formal way from the planning commission because we had talked about at our last meeting, maybe, um. Trying to have something of a, uh, united front town response, but, um, my understanding is the planning commission. Has decided to go ahead and file as an intervenor for intervenor status. Haven't followed up on that to see if they have, but.
That's, that's correct statement.
So.
It's correct, Eric.
Yeah, so I, and they were, that was the body that was going to review the proposal as. Against the town plan. Um, so I guess. Wondering if it might. If we ought to at least coordinate with them.
Yeah, and I, so to my knowledge from being at that meeting. It sounds like the planning commission is going to be sending the select board something after their meeting on the seventh. After next Monday, that'll be, that would be either a letter or something a little more specific. So I think absolutely waiting until seeing, um, seeing what that is makes sense. It's just with the holidays, time is going to go by very quickly. Um, so if there were to be, and, and Casey, I think absolutely just inviting, just talking to Janil and seeing is this something that they, that even maybe she could do. Would, would be great.
So are you volunteering Kaylee to follow up on this and, and? And, uh, figure out. What we should do or are you saying we should schedule something now?
Yeah, I mean, either, either way, I don't know if it needs to be a special meeting of the select board or if it should just be. Us saying, hey, Janil, could A T and T host something and we can use? And we can promote it on the town website like, and I, I don't actually have like a. I don't know exactly what is the best route other than I think. That it would be really great to have a longer, more focused period of time where the community can ask specific questions of A T and T about their proposal. And I'm happy to volunteer to help with that. Sean and Casey, if that. Makes sense.
Yeah, with the information at hand, um, we're assuming the, uh. You know, we have the request for the extension on the comment period. Uh, the, the legal technicality here is, is that the decision from the Public Utility Commission is still, uh, not issued. I'm checking right now in the motion. Status, uh, for extension of comment period, the, uh, the way it's listed now under motion status is pending. I did check with the clerk, um, uh, last week or excuse me, the, one of the attorneys, uh, involved last week and asked, you know. We don't see this actual decision. He said, no, the, the, um. The actual P U C, uh, personnel would be the ones that would give you this final. Clearance, if you will. Uh, and then the more important point here is assuming the motion, um, to receive comments is, is received. We, we effectively only have up until January thirteenth to be providing comments, no matter who we are. So that's it, just for, you know, as far as our timeline is concerned here.
What I've heard the, that the, you know, especially when both parties are agreeing to it, that the extending the comments is pretty routine for them to do. So I think, I think we can kind of. Operate on the assumption that that's gonna happen, I think.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you. Um, but just bear in mind that we don't have that, you know, final determination.
Right, I, I hear you on that.
So. Would it make sense then if someone? Would ask, just send an email to maybe Janil and Beth together and say. Would you guys be willing to host an informational session for town folk? Is that something that? You want to take, Kaylee said she could take that unless Sean, you feel like that comes, needs to come out of town manager's office?
I, I'm fine taking the lead, but I'm just wondering how it jibes with, um. You know, what the planning commission is doing on the subject matter right now. You know, I don't want to have it all of a sudden that, okay, the select board's gonna meet, the planning commission's gonna meet, and oh, by the way, A T and T's gonna meet, you know, it's gonna be a disjointed process. So whatever your preference is.
Maybe Sean, we could just email Janil and Beth to say if we were to do an informational session with A T and T before December thirty first, what are some dates that would work for you? So that way, um, we have that information and then can say. After we hear from the planning commission, great.
My observation is that at the last round, I just, sorry, Eric, go ahead.
I was gonna say maybe include Kristen at least on that as well. So the, the planning commission is tied in.
In some ways I wonder about scheduling because it's, um. I mean, I think you've already hit on this a little bit, but we have our next meeting on the seventeenth. And if we do it after that, really anytime until the fourth, it's kind of almost all holidays. I guess we could squeeze it in after the seventeenth before Christmas holiday. But it's still sort of getting into it. And so it's, it's a little bit hard and do scheduling before next. The seventeenth is a little, I mean, I guess we could do it in one week notice, but that's still a little tight. So I'm not sure about scheduling. I mean, in some ways I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion about it. I'm just arguing for maybe having it at the next select for meeting, actually. You don't like that.
It just sounds like a marathon session again. I'd, I'd rather have it be a standalone.
Okay, I'm definitely not against it. I would just, just pointing that out.
Okay.
And I guess, I guess that would be maybe an argument for trying to at least set a tentative date tonight.
Yeah.
Because the time's ticking.
So the twenty fifth is a date that a lot of people are gonna be sitting around at home and not visiting relatives. And a lot of people won't be working. I think it could be perfect.
Yeah, captive audience, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So we are gonna have the, assuming the balloon test goes forward, um, they're gonna have more, you know, information in regards to the, uh. Simulation photos, the updates. Just thinking out loud now. You know, I could just grease the skids a little bit and say, look, when are you guys anticipating having, you know, that updated? Information ready for viewing and, you know, to get some feedback from community members and have that be the lead in to. But you know, I need, we got to get a read from the select board now about your, you know, are we going to try to pin down some special date? And then see how it aligns with what the planning commission has in mind.
So if we're. I, okay, here's what I'm hearing, that, that we think that it would be a good idea to have a public session. We'd like AT&amp;T to be there, we want to have it happen after the balloon is up, so we have that information because that's probably happening Saturday. We probably should be hearing from the planning commission on the 7th, it sounds like, or they're going to meet at least, so. It sounds to me like, and, and we're not talking about scheduling a select board meeting, this is an informational meeting about a particular project, so. We could just say, we could just agree that, hey, we're going to need to have a special meeting. Let's wait until. The balloon thing happens, we see what the planning commission does and let's have, and in the meantime, Sean can check with AT&amp;T and just say, hey, we'd like to host some sort of. Community information session with you. After these things happen and then get it on the, just. Put it back on Sean to, to find a date that's going to work.
Yeah, that. So are, are they still waiting for the select board to say okay for using the road or are we, we've gone so far past that point?
Yeah, we have.
Why I can't just make a motion and say that, no, they can't use the road and then we can just move on?
You, you can if you.
Second. Can't use the trail, no.
Sheri's making a motion, they, all right.
I don't know, I mean, why can't, yeah.
We can.
Did they, at some point, it seems like it went so far beyond that because they never. We never had any clear understanding that they can actually do it, you know? And then they left, then they just moved on, like, like they no longer needed to have an answer from us, they just moved on and. Did their thing, so why can't we just say, you know what, no, you can't use the road?
It's, yeah.
It's a public highway, I don't think you can say that.
You can, you can deny permission to improve it. You could, they can use it. I agree with Sean, we can't deny their, we can't deny them the ability to pass on a public.
They can't change it, which is what they want to do.
We can deny their permission, we can deny permission to, yeah, to upgrade it.
Right.
And, and that's something that.
That we could do.
That we could do.
And, and that discussion got tabled, let's not forget, since we heard this initial presentation and shortly thereafter. We are still waiting to hear that they can meet the HED construction standard. We've gotten a verbal, they can, but we don't see it in writing as of yet.
Yeah, so it just seems like, we've had to spend all this time on this and they've never met our one requirement. So, which was that they would need to show that they could meet those. You know, the HED guidelines or whatever you want to call them. I just, yeah, I, I guess I just, I don't understand how they get to just pass up that, that's what seems like a big step.
So I don't, I don't think they, they, they don't get to pass it up because they. At least legally, they need our permission to make changes on any town road and including a town trail.
Yeah.
But they could be working on the assumption that they're going to go forward with this, whether or not we give them that permission. You'll go in. A different route and arrange for rights of way and, and improvements for a series of private properties, so. Their strategy is to just go forward, assuming they're going to be able to do it maybe on the trail and maybe some other way. That the two really are not inextricably linked.
So I, yeah, I'd be, let's simplify it for them and tell them that they're not going to do it on our trail.
I like that, they can't, they can't touch the trail, the trail is what it is, if they can't do it without, you know, they just, they can't do anything to that trail except for. Except for walk on it and enjoy the, the scene.
Kaylee.
I was just going to say that the simplicity of that is mind boggling, Sheri. It's like sometimes when you're like thinking about something for so long and you're like, oh, I can just turn left.
No.
But, um, I do think that we should think about it before making a decision tonight. So we could always add that as an item to our next. Agenda or make the motion our next agenda to, there are just some things personally that I would want to think about in terms of if that were the case. What might, what might the decision to have a different road look like or different access look like in terms of the environment, in terms of. A lot of different things, so I think we should wait for the balloon test to happen and. But I don't feel comfortable making that decision tonight, unfortunately, I think it's a great idea, but I just want to think about it a little bit more.
That's fine, so, yeah, so we're done for tonight, but you know, and it can be part of this public, you know. Meeting that occurs later, you know.
Well, our decision doesn't have to be.
Make that decision, you know, and we can listen to it and see what we do, but.
For the good of the conversation, I think, you know, the intent is that there are going to be comments coming from the board as a part of this process. We're just assuming we're going to offer those in advance in January 13th, so this would be one of the comments, if I'm not mistaken.
Sure.
Or one of the, or one of the subjects that would be presented. Is that right, Eric?
Sure, I mean, it could, it could be. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess it. So as Sheri points out, we could just say, no, you can't use the, you can't improve the trail. And that has its own effect, and we could also, if we did that before the comment period was up, I guess, we could also file that. As a comment that the select board. Denied the approval to. Make any changes to the Buffalo Mountain Trail, if that was what the will of the board was. And that might influence the PUC, I don't know.
I mean, it seems like in some ways we've, we've waited long, quite a while to do this. And that if we're. Like if we're going to make that comment, we might as well make up our mind about whether we're going to allow it or not in the near future, just get that over with. And then everybody can move on.
Yeah, at some point, we have to make that decision.
Yeah, and part of it seemed to me anyway, that we were waiting for them to tell us. Whether they could even do it with the, you know, and we never got that answer and they just decided to move on.
We're kind of running out of the clock while, 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 while they're not doing what we asked them to do over a year, I think it's over a year.
Yeah, this has been a long time.
Really clear about it and just say no and.
We have a question from Michael Deering who was on the line. He asked what of the impact on a forest reserve zoned area? Or I think he meant what is the impact on a forest reserve zoned area?
Like in our zoning.
I'm sure that planning and, and yeah, DRB is all looking at that. So that could be part of the public meeting as well, I suppose.
Yeah, I'm not.
I can answer that tonight.
Could we go home?
Yeah, let's go home, so thank you everyone, and we're going to take up, we'll, we will at some point have to take up this question of. Permission to upgrade that, that trail.
Do I continue with just, you know, wait for the balloon test and then we just keep this opportunity open for. Some type of a public forum moving forward or public meeting? Okay. Just want to make sure I got my action item in order.
Maybe we should put the road issue on our agenda next time.
We can. If people want to do that. On the agenda for next time. Kaylee gave a thumbs up, Wiz says, sure, why not?
Yeah.
All right, next time. Coming soon to a theater near you, all right. So that's, that ends our select board meeting for tonight, thank you everyone. And we're adjourned.
Good night.
Happy evening.
Good night, everybody, have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody.